Say the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Thank you, Larry. Marty, second? Thank you, Aaron. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Conflicts disclosure? None? Public communications? Just want to say, I heard a lot of good compliments. Jim, please pass along to the staff about the baccalaureate and the honors or the awards program that was conducted last Wednesday. No matter what, the amount of scholarships that were given out to that graduating class. If I understood it right, it was a million that was accepted in scholarships basically by the class, and then 500,000 that was left on the table because they're not going to those schools. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the numbers that Chelsea had provided. Some huge numbers that year.
That is, and that just doesn't happen, and so thank you to the staff and everybody in this building, you know, custodians, cooks, bus drivers, everybody that works hard to make that happen because it just doesn't happen. That's outstanding, and good for Webster School District. We should be proud of that.
Those kids.
Yeah, a great group of kids. Anything else as to public communications? Motion to approve the minutes of our April 3 regular meeting. Thank you, Aaron. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the minutes of our special board meeting, April 17. Thank you, Joel. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the financial statements as presented.
So move.
Thank you, Aaron. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry. Discussion? Everything looked good on the financial statements. Before we approve those, one thing I wanted to bring up, because we're also going to have it in our claims, our audit expense, if you'll notice, was a little bit higher this year than every other year. The reason being is because we had over $750,000 in grants from the federal government. There's a higher level of audit requirement that we need to go through. And sometimes I'm not sure if the district is aware of how many grants we receive, apply for, and administer throughout the year, so I thought I'd have Lori just kind of give us a quick update as to what she's working on with grants. And there's one grant we want to run by the group to see if we want to apply for it or not, so go ahead, Lori.
Okay, usually annually, we have the Title I grant, we have the RE grant, we have, it's called Small Rural School Achievement Grant. Those are just things we do on an annual basis, so we don't really talk to them or talk about them. This year, we have a few more grants on the table. We have school improvement, we had to fill out an application, we have grants with that. We have Dr. Black completed the CTE equipment grant, that's the one we received for 180,000. We have Homeland Security that he did also. We have Dakota Dreams. There's just numerous grants that we have throughout the year that we really don't talk about because it's just, you know, it's just normal business for us and we keep going on. There is a grant that I am looking into applying for. The odds of us getting this grant are slim because you have to have a certain free and reduced percentage, and we are not high enough. However, we can apply, and if enough schools don't apply, then we would get the leftover funds. I just want to explain that right now for our elementary, they have the option of snack milk in the afternoon. It is not required, so they decide if they want it or not, and then they have to pay 30 cents per milk if they want a snack milk. We also provide snacks to elementary in the afternoon, and at the end of the school year, general fund reimburses that back to food service. We always have that in a claim usually in June, okay? So this grant is fresh fruits and vegetables. I have it ready to go, all I need to do is submit. However, if by chance we would receive this grant, this grant would provide fresh fruits and vegetables every day for the elementary. It would be completely reimbursed by the state. However, it cannot work in conjunction with snack. We cannot provide, we would not be able to have snack milk in the afternoon. So we could get this, snacks will be provided, they're healthy snacks. Our snack milk would have to go away because they, you know, we have the water fountains, water bottles, that type of stuff. And so I just, I guess I wanted to bring it before the board, should I submit this grant and try it, knowing that if we receive it, we're going to get fresh fruits and vegetables, it's all going to be paid for, but our snack milk will go away. And I have to say, the majority of, the schools that, there's a lot of schools that qualify because of their free and reduced numbers. Also, a majority of the schools don't offer snack milks in the afternoon. That's an extra thing that we've always done.
When you say fresh fruits and vegetables, they're supplied by?
We have to order them, and then we get, we would order them on separate invoices. Our food service staff would prepare them, and then we get reimbursed that full amount from the state.
But they would come from our supplier that we have now?
Yes.
I thought it was a good idea. If we can get fresh fruits and vegetables, which are traditionally more expensive, and we can have the state pay for it, I think that is a good idea to have that available for all of our students in the afternoon. To me, it's a plus-plus. Either way, you're still serving something, there's still a liquid available, meaning we have plenty of water fountains and everything across, it just would be the snack milk. So I thought it was good to go, but I thought, why not have everybody get a chance to chime in on that?
Could there be milk if it was paid for by somebody else?
No.
Do many kids take the milk for the snack?
Craig, you have any input on that one?
Well, this is the first I've known about this. It's, you know, broccoli, cauliflower, does it just come plain? Can you get like ranch with it, or dips, or?
I don't know about the dips. I don't, I don't know that much detail yet, so.
Okay. Yeah, a student can go to lunch and drink milk and get seconds there. I don't think we have to have milk in the afternoon. You know, water is good. All the kids should be drinking more water, so I'm, I'm fine with it.
So we would choose what fruits and vegetables we were ordering?
Yes, I mean, I'm sure, you know, the state has requirements, you know, they're not going to let us.
But it's not going to be broccoli and cauliflower. Yeah, we're not going to probably be able to get kiwis, but maybe apples, you know, I mean, price of common sense, it has to go with it, I would guess. Maybe not.
Lori, do you, the other thing about, are the other schools, are they cutting the fruits and veggies in the kitchen, or is that up to the teachers, or is it coming?
The food service does it. The food service prepares it.
Okay.
And again, I don't know that, I don't think we have a chance just because of our free and reduced, but I didn't want to submit it, and then we got it, and it's like, oh, jeez.
Oh, no, cutting, yeah, preparing them, cutting the fruit.
We good with it? All right, go ahead and go forward with it, Lori.
Just to pen on the same note, out of curiosity, the group that came in December to want to, you know, to set up that special fund, have they brought any money in?
Okay. We had a motion to approve the financial statements in a second, excuse me, in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the claims.
So move.
Thank you, Joel. Second? Thank you, Aaron. Discussion?
As Tom mentioned, our audit expense is $5,000 more than normal, and it probably will be again next year. And that's because of all the ESSR funds we have received. I did want to mention, the audit reports did just come in. It's your black binders, you can take them home. 63 pages of fund reading, and then we'll have that on the agenda for approval next month.
Okay. Any other discussion on the claims? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the negotiated agreement. Thank you, Aaron. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Discussion? This is just what we completed last month with negotiations?
So all duties will be included in the negotiated agreement that's going out?
We still have to address a few things, though, for the past year.
That's what I'm getting at.
Okay.
Are you meaning like coaching positions or something, or, yeah, we've got a couple of open?
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Apologize on that. Motion to approve the, or excuse me, to vote on the South Dakota High School Activities Association ballots, and can that just be one motion?
It can, and then the athletic director's recommendations are included in your packet?
So the motion would be motion to vote on the South Dakota High School Activity Association ballots per our athletic director's recommendations.
So move.
Thanks.
Second.
Jim and Christmas, this is a hard one. All right, discussion. Clearly a hot topic whether we're going to vote no or something else here. Any discussion? Great.
I don't have any.
Yeah, great job, guys. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to accept the resignation of Natasha Op. Thank you, Larry. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Joel. Discussion? I have a letter here written by Natasha dated May 12, 2023. "It is with much sadness in my heart that I am announcing my resignation from Webster Area Schools for the 2023-2024 school year. I will dearly miss this district and all its people, but I am accepting an instructor position with Northern State University for the coming school year. This opportunity will bring us closer to family, will bring me more flexibility, and will allow me to have more time at home with my son. My few years at Webster have honestly been some of my favorite years ever. I have never felt as quote "at home" end quote as I do here in the Webster Area School District. The elementary staff, as well as the middle school and high school staff, immediately welcomed me with open arms and have become a true family to me. Through this position at NS, excuse me, though this position at NSU is something that I've dreamt of for years, leaving Webster is no easy choice. Working in this district has brought me many friendships, opportunities, and so very much joy. I have no words to describe the heartache that I feel in leaving my students and Bearcat family. Please note that I never went looking to leave the Webster Area School District. Instead, I simply had an opportunity fall into my lap that I simply cannot turn away from. I would like to thank the Webster staff and community for an amazing three years. I have genuinely loved my time in this school district and hope to maintain the wonderful relationships that I have built with the staff, students, and community members. Sincerely, Natasha." Obviously, a very nice letter of resignation. You know, we unfortunately have to go through these on a regular basis when individuals find other opportunities somewhere else, and obviously Natasha's done a great job for us, and she will be missed. But good for her for a new position. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Natasha. Motion to approve the resignation of Amy Miller as junior high, or, excuse me, junior class advisor.
So move.
Thank you, Joel. Second? Thank you, Aaron. Discussion? I have a letter here, "Dear Dr. Block, I am submitting my resignation as junior prom advisor. I have enjoyed my many years of helping to make this a special night for WAHS students and starting the annual tradition of the Bearcat Ball. However, the time has come for someone with more direct contact with your students to take on this advisor role. I will always be a phone call away and happy to help volunteer in any way that they might need in the future. Sincerely, Amy Miller." That's a tough job to put on the prom. There's a lot of moving parts with that. I don't think anybody in this room is volunteering to do that anytime soon.
Larry, you might be interested.
Ah, no.
So, it's pretty good. Larry, let us know when you're putting in your application. But it is very much appreciated. That is a hard job. Any other discussion?
We have advertised in-house, and we do have some interest, so.
Oh, that's great.
We should be able to fill it.
Oh, darn. That's pretty good, Larry. Lead off with that and your reported farmer story next week. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve contracts for junior high golf coach Jacob Parable.
So move.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Second, Joel. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve contract for Mike Dunsey, head girls' basketball coach. Thank you. Marty, second. Larry, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve volunteer coach Mike Ninkie for golf. Thank you, Aaron. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve the surplus property of a Xerox copier VersaLink C7025 of little to no value. Thank you, Aaron. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Joel. Discussion?
It's been used, and we're done with it.
Start your campaign pro, start your campaign signs for junior class advisor, Larry.
Maybe there's toner in there.
There might be. I'll kick in some money, Joel, start a fund. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to approve policy revision for the evaluation of professional staff.
So move.
Thank you, Joel. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Larry. Discussion?
This was due to our accreditation review, and it needs to be approved before I can actually include it as a document to upload. Real briefly, I separated the teacher's evaluation process with the principal's evaluation process because the manner in which it was written previously made it appear that principals could do an alternative observation every other year, and that's not allowable by state. We didn't allow that, but the wording made it appear that principals could do something every other year as an alternative observation, and so that's why they're separated. Principals are evaluated minimally once per year, and that's, that's really the gist of the change. It's two separate paragraphs at the top of the policy now instead of one.
Exciting stuff to lead off your reported farmer article. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to finalize the 2022-2023 calendar. Thank you, Aaron. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Discussion?
In essence, what we have is the last day of school for the students is May 26, which is a Friday, and there are still four school days and one in-service day to consider for the certified staff. Right now, Mr. Case and I have actually scheduled, and we'll talk about that a little bit, we've scheduled some training on Tuesday the 30th and Wednesday the 31st. The question is, at what point are the teachers done? Do they fulfill all of the contract days? Do they not? That's the decision basically that needs to be made this evening. We're only a week, well, two weeks out basically from tonight as to what's finalized for that following week.
All right, gentlemen. What are your thoughts?
So we picked up two of the five with those training?
Yes, yes. We did one training on a snow day, and then we did an additional training as a training at home when there was in-service schedule, so those two.
30th and 31st.
Those two have been, according to what we've done previously, they've been taken care of for contract days.
But of the five days left, the 30th and 31st are two of the five.
Yes, yes.
So there's three.
There's three left, yeah.
Do you get any feedback from staff?
Of course, they'd like to be done on 26. I mean, they haven't directly said that, but that's what I would guess.
Yeah.
Well, with the training, it'd be, the 31st would be the last day. With your blessing.
Yeah, we didn't actually ask them their input because we knew we wanted to schedule some stuff at the end. Just a personality of your training that I think will be a good lead-in to our training in August. But unfortunately, no, we didn't ask the teachers about that. We just set the training up and sent out a calendar invite. So we have training scheduled for Tuesday morning. Nothing in the afternoon. Originally, we did have local law enforcement coming in the afternoon, and then on Wednesday.
Yeah, we, they will talk to our staff.
They'll be here Wednesday.
They'll talk to our staff in that afternoon, that Tuesday.
Was it back on Tuesday? Because that got Wednesday announced, back on Tuesday.
Yeah, from Dr., or, not Dr., but Brandon Miller said that they will talk to us on Tuesday.
Okay.
So everything will happen.
Differentiated instruction on Tuesday morning, local law enforcement on Tuesday afternoon, and then Wednesday morning, the training is called Handle with Care. It's training for staff to basically help them learn how to deal with students who have been through a traumatic event, either a loss to a parent or an accident or something traumatic, so. And then Wednesday afternoon, we do not have anything scheduled, correct?
I don't think so. Now that we're talking about it, I better check.
I thought we were moving the law enforcement to Wednesday, but.
Let me double check.
Either way, it's Tuesday and Wednesday are kind of.
One of those ways.
All right, gentlemen. We have three days. Where do you stand?
If we don't have anything to fill them with, we don't have anything for them to do.
You know, I, I'll just throw off for conversation purposes. I do think that still, when we even have these snow days, it's not a 100% off day for our staff. I still think there's preparation that goes on leading into the next day, and preparation or follow-up from the days previous. I'd be okay with last day with staff being Tuesday, May 31st. Or, excuse me, Wednesday, May 31st.
If any of them have summer work, whether they're self-employed or working for somebody else, I mean, it's only a few days, but. And I only say this one time, we had a where I was before, we got a pay raise, but they added four days to the calendar. And one of the board members came up and said, you got a pretty nice pay raise. And I said, no, I took a pay cut. He goes, what do you mean? Well, we were roofing at the time, which is pretty lucrative business then, but by adding days, we lost workdays. So the point I'm making with this is that, you know, if we stretch it up further, they might be obligated for something as well that were definitely, I think Wednesday's good. I'm good with that.
There's still contract days. You know. They're contract days. But I don't know, we don't have anything else to fill them with. If our project was further along, then we could do something there.
Yeah, that would be nice.
I just don't know that we have anything else.
You know, I get it also that I agree with Joel. Contract days are contract days. And if we did have the CTE project further along where we could actually be more able to move in, that would be something we could do. Obviously, if we say the last day is that Wednesday, it would be nice if staff would recognize that that is still giving three days and be more willing than not to come in and assist maybe this summer with getting some things done as something comes up to be moved. You know, that would certainly help from our perspective as we're trying to look for help because I will tell the district, I don't think it's a good investment of our funds to pay Lory O'Farrell and Dr. Block to move bookcases. We expect you to do business manager work and complete grants and do our 63-page audit. We expect Dr. Block to complete the policy requirement that nobody reads except for the evaluation committee. Everybody else falls asleep, but thank you for taking care of that because if we don't take care of it, we have an issue. That's what we want Dr. Block and Lori to be working on, not moving books, not moving shelves, not moving tables. I get it. The same thing with our staff, but here if we're giving up three days, maybe they could have at least a little bit of an understanding that we're doing so, and if they could assist us during the summer as needed, that would be great.
Well, Mr. Case and Dr. Block and Lori, Aaron. They're doing all their contract days.
Correct.
In addition to other duties.
Correct.
With that said, I'm good with the 31st being the last day.
Correct. Larry?
Yeah.
All right, Aaron. Marty? All right, 31st is the last contract day with the understanding that we hope it's made very clear to the staff that we would like to see them help us out during the summer as we transition into that new wing. Okay? I think that's it for action items. Discussion items. Superintendent report, Dr. Block.
Seniors' last day is Wednesday. We do have humanity launch coming to finish out the year for them. It's kind of an assembly that will start at 9:00 a.m. and go until about 1:30, 1:45. And then we have a little bit of a reception for the seniors and then kind of a walk through K through 12 as the culminating event for the seniors this year. Last day of school for the students is the 26th, 12 o'clock dismissal, and then graduation is on the 21st. We do have the last two days of school for at least on the high school end. We've got some staff members on due to track. State track is that Thursday and Friday, which is the second to the last day and the last day of school. It's not ideal for us, so I will do what I can to get some subs and hopefully have kind of a meaningful day, especially the last half day that we have. In-service topics, I already talked about those, so just you can clarify, I think, with Brandon. So we've got stuff. We have some training planned for both Tuesday and Wednesday following Memorial Day weekend. And then the calendar for 2023-24. If you recall at the previous meeting that we had, I had brought up the proposal of maybe having a vacation day or a comp day or whatever you want to call it after parent-teacher conferences or the Friday of parent-teacher conferences. And there's certainly that I sent out to the staff, actually two different surveys and having a staff meeting. In all honesty, it really, it just continues to come down to almost a 50-50 split. If I have a majority, it's such a minor majority that it's just not. There's nothing real direct in me moving forward with the days that they would like, so right now I don't have anything planned. What we hope to do is the two, part of the reason we were doing this or proposing this was to have a second day for paraprofessionals to come prior to the school year starting. Meaning, we just felt it's necessary to have paraprofessionals come two days versus just the one of our pre-calender in-service days. So that's how the discussion began. Right now, we're going to see if having them both, come both of those days, which are our original scheduled days, will be enough. We still have not finalized the training in August for the State with Alice training. And I don't know if you had something yet we were looking at. It's not finalized, and so we could, I could come to you later on and say we do want to change a specific in-service day to a certain date or possibly move a third one there. If we move a third one prior to the school year, that means we would have four during this school year. And I would probably propose that the February date gets moved. Again, it was about a 50-50 split with the staff as to who wanted it and who did not want that particular date. So I guess in just, there's no changes right now, but not everything is final for us prior to school when it comes to those in-service days, so I may be coming back to you with some proposals to change or amend the calendar for that. If we're able to make it work where our paraprofessionals come both Tuesday and Thursday prior to the school year starting, and that works, that's what we'll do. That does change a little bit with the hours for our pairs because right now they typically only come one. But Lori and I discussed that regarding snow days and things like that. It probably is going to balance out quite easily.
It won't snow next year.
Why not? That, I believe, is all I have for the discussion items under super tents.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Block. Principal report, Mr. Case.
I won't go through all the activities, but elementary and we have a lot of field trips, you know, and in the school year and activities and crossing guard party and AR rewards and recognition assembly. And we have a lot of things to finish up here, but things are going pretty smooth. Just to update on driver's ed, we do have a large class. We have 50 in there now. Mr. Nygaard was open to going to 50, so we're gonna pack the choir and band room with desks and have a large DE class, so.
How many of those kids are out of district?
I think six or seven, if I'm remembering right. So yeah, other than that, a lot of things here to do in the next couple of weeks and hope and pray for nice weather and field day coming up too for the kids out at the out at the track. I think that's the last week. I can't remember which date, but hopefully the weather cooperates with us and it doesn't snow.
Feel comfortable on that. All right. Thanks, Mr. Case. NESC?
We had a meeting last.
The meeting is actually tonight, so we're not able to attend, and I was not able to go to the superintendent's meeting, so I don't have any recent updates.
Okay. Accreditation review?
I'll just hand out a sheet. Kind of gives you a summary, and I did speak with Tom about this because he gets he gets CC'd with our report as being the board president, so. It really wasn't too bad. There's some nitpicky stuff, I'm gonna be honest, and I don't care if the state hears me say that. But that's what they do. This is my own summary. I just kind of shortened it because it was, seriously, it was like six or eight, maybe 10 meters long. As you can see, items one through 20, nothing necessary. Most of that was just turning in documentation, assurances, things like that. And then when you get to item 21, the first one, that's the first item that had any issues with it, and it was basically dealing with our online courses at the high school level. I'm gonna be very honest with this. The South Dakota, the state of South Dakota has developed, designed what's called the South Dakota Virtual High School, and it is a great program. We utilize online classes. The majority of our online classes are for credit recovery. We have some students that are taking online classes, and when I say online, I'm talking about high school. If I say dual credit, that's college, if that makes sense, college or technical schools. So these are just high school courses. We can use Apex at $125 per seat, and I can assure you, me personally can assure you, I wrote, I actually wrote the crosswalk for Algebra I with our textbook and curriculum that we use along with the Apex. And Apex is a legitimate class. If you pass an Apex class, you are able to independently learn, and you're probably going through some pretty good rigorous coursework. So I don't feel like Apex is subpar for what we have for expectations. The state, however, and this is my personal opinion, because they've invested as much as they have financially in the South Dakota Virtual High School, and they have teachers within the state that are the teacher of record, they promote that program more, and therefore you have to, in our case, we have to prove that the other programs that we use are as good as the South Dakota Virtual High School. Now, the difference financially is $125 per seat for Apex. I can put one kid signed up in that one seat, and he can take an endless amount, or she can take an endless amount of classes within a calendar year, as long as they work their own pace. It's up to them. The virtual high school is approximately $250 per half credit. And so a one-credit, Algebra I credit recovery class would cost our district $500. You do the math, folks. And so that's why I'm willing to do more of the work in proving that Apex is a legitimate program and it works for us. With that, we had to provide documentation of what's called a crosswalk. We look at our curriculum and their curriculum and do a crosswalk with the standards, make sure that they are meeting the state's standards. And so we provided evidence of two classes. I actually only provided one class of evidence in the original upload, and that was where some of this came up with is I needed to provide two. That would be on me for not fully reading the instructions, I believe. But we've already got it taken care of. We've got the stuff uploaded and it should be corrected. Teaching to the state content standards, this mainly was me not referencing the documents that I uploaded. I think I might have overloaded them. I provided a lot of documents for lesson plans that were aligned to the state's standards because I sent an email to our staff, and I received a plethora of information from our staff. And, you know, you had to have each of the grade levels represented, so K through five and six through eight and nine through 12. You had each of those levels represented, and you needed to have one from each of the core courses. Well, I made sure I had that, but I provided more. And I think because I provided too many documents, it was frustrating to the reviewer because it stated in the review that it is difficult for the reviewer to know which documents go with which. And so I needed to kind of update my narrative to include actual references to which document I was talking about in each particular paragraph. I have since done that.
I think that's ridiculous.
What I've put together, I believe, is going to be acceptable, but I want to know that until we submit it a second time. Teacher evaluations. This one, I'm gonna say it's kind of on Craig and me. I think it also lies on our teachers a little bit. We migrated to Frontline, which is an online observation evaluation process. This will be our second year, I believe. And when we did that, I was not aware that I needed to say I want all four domains. There's four domains. There's and I probably didn't bring those. Yeah, four domains. Planning and preparation, professional responsibilities. Those are the one and the four that are missing in Frontline. I didn't know that they were missing. He didn't know they were missing, and lo and behold, we did teacher observations for a full year last year and partway through this year. And I asked my staff at our last K-12 meeting, did anybody recognize that they were missing? Nobody recognized it, but it is required. We were still evaluating on domain one and domain four, but it was more objective. We weren't using a checklist to come up with our rating, and so then we couldn't justify how we were coming up with our rating in those two particular domains. And so corrective action there. We reverted back to the spreadsheet that we used previous to going to Frontline 100%. I personally think it's actually more convenient, and we might stick to it. It, well, it's gonna be dependent on. I've also contacted Frontline and requested that domain one and domain four be included in our online observations, and they will do that. We can't do it this year because we're in the middle of an evaluation cycle. They will have that in place for us next year, so Mr. Case and I will probably decide if it's efficient enough to use Frontline, we will. If it's not, we may just continue to use the spreadsheet, which calculates everything for us. It's a spreadsheet that was designed by the state, and I will give them credit for that one. I think it's actually pretty efficient to use. And so that part should be taken care of with corrective action. I'll have a narrative that states what we plan to do and that I've contacted Frontline and that we have reverted back to our spreadsheet. We will also submit new documentation of those spreadsheets that we use for an evaluation process for evaluations this year, so they know we've gone back to them. One of the other things, this is the nitpicky stuff or one of the nitpicky things. Student learning objectives is required for all of our teachers, and that's to prove that there is student achievement happening. In that process, one of our teachers referenced Common Core. Well, Common Core is, I would say, kind of like a swear word at the state level because we now have state standards that are accepted by South Dakota. What was interesting, and I'm being, I'm gonna be kind of a little smart aleck here. What's interesting is when Chelsea Larson and I looked at a couple of the standards, they're almost identical, folks. In fact, the ones that we looked at are word for word. If you look at Common Core, you look at the South Dakota standards. So I'm frustrated, but they don't want us using the word Common Core, so we've already expressed that to our staff that shne on the Common Core standards, don't use it. Use South Dakota-approved state standards, so. Principal evaluation, nothing. School calendar, nothing. And then certification. Eric Coyne was not certified. He did not apply for the temporary one-year certificate in the fall. We did remind him because he's resigning, it's basically a null situation. It's no longer an issue for us in the future. And Vanessa Bloom, her name showed up in there, and I explained this to our staff at our K-12 meeting too. I'm not sure why she's in there. She has had an actual full-fledged teaching certificate through South Dakota since March of 2022. So a year ago in March, she was fully certified. I don't know why this showed up. So that's my explanation there is. According to South Dakota DOE 411, which tells you when she's certified and the copy of a certificate that I have, I'm uploading her certificate stating that she's been certified since March of '22. That's the gist of it. Pretty much everything that needs to be corrected, we will submit the documentation within, I hope by the end of the week. And we have until July 18th to do it, but I just want to give them what they need, and then they can redo that again and go from there.
The takeaway is that, you know, these 26 items, we really do get into the minutia, and again, I want to remind our district to me. Being a superintendent of a school has a lot of things to do other than just making sure recess, class, and, you know, you know, kids graduate. You look at some of these requirements, and they don't pop up, I think, in the general, everyday conversation of what people understand are the requirements of the school. Jim contacted me immediately on this. I think it was like at 7:15 at night when you got the email, Jim, or something, you got ahold of me, and and he takes this seriously. I mean, he's fired up. I mean, and that's good. That's what we want. When I had reviewed it, there was nothing on here that jumped out at me that said, boy, this is an issue. We need to go back and correct. Our school district is in a really good position, and I think, again, that just was showing at the at the awards banquet. This year's class had, they had all the kids stand up with ACT scores over 24. And if you'll recall, when Jamie was on the board, we couldn't get kids necessarily sometimes that were there. And that was one of the reasons why we went to the On to College online program. I think there was 14 kids, I counted, out of this graduating class. And I get it, that helps sometimes with genetics, but that also helps with what the school is doing. I think you're doing a great job. I had no issues. When you told me about Vanessa Bloom being a certified teacher for over a year, and then they still put that down as an issue, that to me is weak. Also, when they say basically it was hard for the reviewer to figure out the answer, that's to me like, well, you didn't give me enough of a cheat sheet to figure out where to go. I mean, that's your job. So I think we're in a good spot.
We are. What gets me.
What gets me is, Larry, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the teacher accountability calculator that we have to follow. You know, and the Department of Education tells us how many staff we need to have, what we're supposed to be paying them, and then they come at us with all this stuff and it's on Dr. Bach, but they have to help you, the staff does, provide a lot of this information. It's just more things that they're doing, taking away from their time to educate our kids. And then the stuff with these extra people, I mean, they know how hard it is to find educators. We need to, they need to change and peer to accept and find some new ways to attract new people. Just drives me nuts.
I, I can tell.
If you think you were mad, I was sitting here just.
So on behalf of the state, I can tell you, and this is a good thing, they do have a new apprenticeship program that they're starting this fall. And it is, it is specifically for people who are currently serving as paraprofessionals and have an associate's degree. They can, over the course of two to three years, end up with an education degree from Northern State University or Dakota State University. It is a, it's certainly going to help with the shortage of teachers. Now, I'm not trying to be pessimistic, but I will tell you, it doesn't help us immediately. And basically what it does is it takes our paras and we train them to either prepare for a, a position that doesn't exist as an opening in our school, or we prepare them to go teach in Wabbe or go teach in Langford or anything. So wherever they're at, they're probably going to leave that school to go be a teacher somewhere. So it will help with the teacher shortage statewide, but locally, it's not going to possibly help. Depends on your situation.
Can Secretary of Education, as they're appointed, not elected, change this?
The requirements? Uh.
I mean, when they.
I think proposals could be made and they could, but I, I would guess that it goes to.
Who does, who does he answer to? The governor?
Governor, 100%.
So have you seen over the years, you mentioned one and four before, a change in, in the accreditation from Secretary of Ed? Have you noticed much difference?
The only change that I've seen is they keep adding more. I mean, this is minor, but in God we trust. You, you'll notice at the, at the entrance of every one of our buildings, we have that. That is state law, that we have to have those signs. No, we don't have to have the creative signs that we have. We've, we've kind of been all achievers and that, and I, that was Angie Gary's doings and she did a great job. But if you don't have that, you're a violation, that's something you got to fix. Those are the types of things that we keep adding. The bullying policy, I mean, obviously, right? Obviously, every single school wants to do a bully. Do we really truly need a state law? And does the state law make any difference in our school for our bullying policy? I don't think it does. That's my personal opinion, but it's one of the requirements. And so it's things like that over the course of the last 10 years, I, I would, I wouldn't know for sure, but I would guess this has gone from maybe 15 items to 26. We've probably added six, eight, 10 items in the last 15 years. So that's the, what I see changed. We constantly add more for, you know, assurances, guarantees.
Well, one, one variable that you have to keep in mind too is they have different staff that come up and do the questioning, correct?
Yes.
So just for example, we had our special ed review this year. So we have some issues that we have to fix. So we've done the prong one already, so now it's the prong two, so we have a timeline to get those in. So we have those every five years. Five years ago, if you reverse it, five years ago, we had a clean slate. We were, we rocked it. We were doing awesome. So all of a sudden, we have a different review team, five years later, we have some things to fix, things that make you go, hmm.
The SLO process, now this is just what I'm learning from other superintendents that went through accreditation this year prior to us. We were required to provide steps two and three in the SLO process because I didn't, we, we, we put in the approval process of step one and we did the, the results for the SLO. Steps two and three, one of them is approval and ongoing communication. Now, according to the superintendents that I've talked to, they said steps two and three are only recommended, they're not required by law. They didn't get written up on it and they don't do it any different than we do and we got written up on it. So I, I submitted it, I'm doing what I have been asked to do, but I think it does, that's just proof that it comes down to the reviewer that we had, so I can't do anything about that. So we're just going to do what we're supposed to.
Just so the district has an idea, I mean, these 26 things, you look at secure storage of student records assurance, graduation requirements, character development instruction, alternative instruction notification assurance, medical marijuana. I mean, that's just the, thrown in the different things that we have to jump through that you wouldn't figure is necessarily our core job of teaching students.
All right. One thing I would say is the state gets a lot of federal dollars too and that's where a lot of this is probably coming from. Whenever there's money, there are guidelines, restrictions, requirements, assurances. And so some of this is probably required at the state level because the federal government requires.
But if I'm the Secretary of Education, I want my teachers teach them. If it was the one thing I would do, I would streamline this process so it's click, 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 click for them federal guidelines and get rid of them and get you guys back to doing what you're good, you know what I mean?
Right.
Just streamline the process.
Simplify it.
Joel's never worked in government.
Here's one thing, you need so many credits to graduate, is that all states have the same?
No. I don't believe so.
Each one? So each state Secretary of Ed can, I'll drop a math credit or something, can they actually do that?
I would say this, I'm guessing that there are some federal minimum requirements for graduation.
At least a stringent, at least.
And as long as your state meets that, you can go above. And the same thing for us, the state requires 20 credits, I believe, we require, no, the state requires 22, we require 25. We require three more than what the state does.
All right. We're good kicking the accreditation review log? All right, moving on to buildings and grounds.
First item that I have here is CTE building lease. Lori and I had shared a discussion last week. I think in the past, where we were at with it, and I don't know, I haven't spoken to anybody from the Development Corporation, but I will, if that's what we need to do. I believe that they will allow us to extend it if we absolutely need to, meaning our lease is up at the end of this school year. If we needed it in September, I believe they could. No, we haven't had that conversation with that. And maybe we don't need to, but it's just one of those things where you're kind of in the back of your mind thinking, okay, what if the project isn't completely done and we can't move in right away? We're okay with the ag and the facts because we can stay in the, the 50s wing, you know, an extra week or so if we absolutely have to. And I don't want to share that with the construction company. But it's a different story with what we have for our architecture and construction program done in that building. I would assume by the early August, the, the, the ventilation system for the welding's probably going to be dismantled and removed. I believe Bo Larson is going to be, the students are starting to dismantle the simulator, three-story simulator that's going to be moved. And so there's going to be some things taken care of within the next week or two, as well as over the summer, that will almost leave that building semi-nonusable for the program. And so maybe we don't have to have a lease extension, but we would have to find a place for them here.
I think we need to do, because in our agreement, it says if we are going to break the agreement, we need to let them know in writing, like now. So we're probably going to have to have a discussion with them and say, you know, what's our intent to be done, but.
I thought we talked to them.
That was, I think, wasn't it a year ago or so?
It was.
We had a conversation, but I think we need to just.
We talked to them May 10th. I just won't look back through my texts and I don't know, that's one of conversations I'll add. But let's move out. We've got a new building that's supposed to be done.
Well, June 12th is, this is to be turned over to us. That was the date that he gave us last meeting.
For the office space.
I see the ductwork, active heating is, I think a lot of ductwork is in, piping, progress.
We'll, we'll know more tomorrow. I mean, we have a, we have a construction meeting tomorrow morning with, with, you know, a crew, so we'll, we'll learn some more tomorrow, but.
Can we just take, gentlemen, we're in, we're working on the CTE, can we just walk through it right now, see where we're at, so everybody has a good idea for five, 10 minutes, just move our meeting? Just right on down here, we're not going anywhere.
So if the contract is up at the end of the year, are we supposed to have everything out of there at that time? Or can it wait till September?
Right after I said that, I kind of thought, hmm, because ending at the end of May and possibly using it for a little bit in September, that's a fair amount of time.
Yeah, we can just.
Let's go walk down and see what we're looking at here.
I will contact them and we'll find out.
So see what we got. Want to go with your ball game? You want to go pro one? You know, I guess, Lori. I have no kids in school anymore?
Yeah, I'm probably, yeah.
I'm doing my, beauty. It's very good.
Yeah, but I mean, it was. The others, the percentage was quite a bit different on the others. Yep. Um, I did in, um, I did include, we'll have the $14,750 Johnson Control Purchase Agreement that will be in there every year for maintenance. Any other questions on general fund? You know, like we've talked about before, it's 70 to 75%. Salaries and benefits. And then it's our general maintenance, repairs. Electricity, natural gas, all of that business. And again, our general fund is, our revenue is taxes and state aid. That's the majority of how we generate revenue. I think I'm going to skip all our capital outlay because we're going to need a lot of discussion. We'll just cover the other funds because they're all. Very easy. Special education. Unless you tell me otherwise, earlier conversations, we had discussed. Dropping the special education levy. Like we, you know, we did this year and we have discussed doing that again for next year, dropping it some more and. Offsetting capital outlay, so there will be no tax increases. We're just. Moving money around. That's where I'm at right now. Leave it at that.
You're comfortable on that?
That's what I have in the budget.
Yeah, but I mean, you're comfortable on this bed.
Okay, and then special education. Basically, nothing has changed with that either. It's. Okay, and then I just give you a little update there on where we're sitting with funds. These other expenditures below, the food service conduction oven, that's a must, elementary desks are a must. These things are things that, besides the co-curricular, which isn't a must, but we have that on a rotation, so it's kind of important to keep that going. These are things that, you know, we need. So for the revenue generated, we still, we would have a hundred, three thousand dollars left. And then we also have an estimated fund balance of two million dollars, okay? And that is taking out my transfer to general fund, which, fingers crossed, we never transfer that amount, but we have to record it in there, okay? Now, this is where Mr. Block comes into play. So we have a hundred thousand dollars left in our, in our, from what we're generating. We have a two million dollar fund balance. We now need to look at Mr. Block's and determine what's required, what we need to do. And, you know, is it a priority this year? If it is, we're gonna spend this much fund balance? Or is it something we can put off to the next year? So that's where his list comes into play. And we've already spent a hundred and three thousand because of the camera system.
The camera system hopefully won't come in at a hundred, but our latest quotes, which are now six months old, were in that eighty-five thousand dollar range. So we gave a little bit there to be safe, and hopefully, we're still within the range. And if you recall, the camera system, we would, I don't know exact numbers, I've got them in my office, but the camera system at eighty-five thousand I was talking about, we would spend about sixty thousand dollars to put a new system in the CDE wing, CTE wing, and retro it to our old system, put the two together. Or we would spend about eighty-five thousand to do K through twelve system that would include the CTE. And so really, when you look at the whole scheme of things, and our system, Mr. Case would probably agree, we could use an upgrade. I mean, our original system was installed in two thousand and one, and I think we've upgraded the DVRs twice in twenty-three, twenty-two years. And so some of the cameras are newer and a little bit better quality, but we still have some of the original cameras from two thousand and one, and they're not very good. Even if they do record, you don't get to see everything that you'd like. So do we absolutely have to replace our camera system? No, but in light of what we're doing, this is probably the time to do it.
And we had this, Mr. Block locked this up, if you guys recall, we had this at a previous meeting, we had discussed this, and that's kind of the direction.
So if you were just gonna do the new addition for sixty-five thousand, how many cameras are, does that include? Do you put them in the classrooms?
No, it would just be in the hallways, and something to do with how the two systems would have to, the old, the current system they have is, I think, isn't it called an analog? I'm not sure the correct term.
Like cameras?
Yeah. It's not an IP camera system. An IP camera system runs on your IP addresses. And so you don't have to have direct wires to every single cameras. You do have to have power and things like that, but we don't have a newer system. And to get those two to talk would be, you know, twenty thousand dollars to get the two systems to work together. So it wouldn't be a huge camera system, but to get that camera system to work with our old system would push it to that sixty thousand. And again, these are numbers that I'm just out of my head from, from the quotes that we had originally. It's certainly more to do the K-12, but when you looked at the K-12 versus just that's, that wing and retroing it together with our old system, I would recommend that we go with the K-12 system. Just with the age of our current system and what we're doing for a project, it's.
I agree.
The fencing, is that a hundred thousand dollars for cameras? I mean, there's.
You know what? We're not even going for the cat's meow either. I was just up at Britton recently, and holy cow, did they have a system. Their custodian's got a big screen TV monitor, he can see sixty-four cameras on his system. And I'm like, well, we don't even have custodial staff that would even run that. I was just amazed. They, they can, their superintendent, their custodian, and anybody that has access can open up any door. They have nine doors out of there, twenty doors. Steve's at home, he can let somebody into the building.
I think there's.
We're not doing any of that. We're just talking about cameras.
Huge difference in what you get too, when you're buying cameras, you know. I got them in my barn at home for calf, and then I got some security cameras at the shop. And I mean, you know, you went from five thousand dollars to get them in this building, to twenty-five thousand dollars in this building. And I've got a buddy that's got one, that he paid twenty thousand for one camera. I mean, it's just, you, it is, you're getting what you're paying for. And I think when you're talking about talking to one another, my stuff, and that's all been bought in the last three years, they already won't talk to each other. You know, I can't use one platform for all my cameras, you gotta have two different. So I get where they're coming from there. You gotta get everything on one platform.
And we will get, right now, the quotes that I was dealing with are from Safe and Secure, and that's the company we've traditionally gone with, but because it's so sizable, we have to get bids.
Oh, yeah.
So we will go with Comtech and Aberdeen, I'm guessing, they will bid on it, and Safe and Secure will bid on it, so.
We could advertise locally too, right?
Yeah, it's sizable.
Yeah.
One thing I can say is that our system has lasted us, I mean, for us to say that some of our cameras are still going from two thousand and one, I don't really wanna admit that we're still using cameras at all, but it's proof that the wiring and the infrastructure is still in place and working. But again, those are all hard-wired cameras. Going to a newer system is gonna be an ICOM system, where it's gonna run through your wireless.
I noticed, Jimmy, you've got the retaining wall, but the fencing and the grass, that's on us, isn't it, Joel?
Oh, boy.
I think, Patty, we had that, I know the grass is on us, but I wasn't sure on the fence.
Are you sure? Are you sure?
We had discussion, I don't know what we finally decided on that. Because I, I remember having the discussion and then asking ourselves, do we really want to? And it also goes along with the final cleanup of the project, or the cleanup of the building. Remember, we had some discussion, and the more we got into it, the more we thought, hmm, I don't know if that's really worth the savings, if we had to do it ourselves. I have it written down, we can talk to Patty.
Talk to Patty.
Fencing, grass, is there anything else? That's what I'm trying to do with this list, is, is just come up with a cumulative list of projects that are basically owner responsibilities.
Forty-six thousand for landscaping.
Any sidewalks, anyone? The sidewalk going south, we have to do ourselves. We talked about, I have it on here, the concrete in front of the current business office. Just because that's gonna be used for the center base students, I, we need to consider replacing that. Doesn't happen this year, but there's some, there's some uneven concrete there. And Joel and I mentioned drainage on the city street there. It just, I don't know what we need to do with that, contact the city, see if there's something they can do. But where you drop off the suits for center base, in the wintertime, when there's any sort of melting, basically, it fills up with water to the, to the height of the concrete, and then it freezes. And so they're either walking through frozen slush and ice and everything else, or it's solid ice that you're walking on. So, or if it's completely melted, then they're going through, you know, six inches of water, because it's not draining right at that, that handicap approach.
Just to get the conversation started here, Lori, what we're looking at is, how much money do we want to invest a fund balance into projects for next year? Or the corollary, what are the priority for projects next year that we want to do? And I would just throw out, just for conversation purposes, right now, if we're estimating a fund balance of two million dollars at the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, would that be, that be the correct date, correct? I would throw out that we, just a proposal, we say, Jim, you have five hundred thousand dollars of fund balance to use as to these other projects, give us what your order of priority is, maximizing that money. I will tell you where I come up with that number, is if you look in your audit book, you know, on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, our balance was one million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. So basically, we've known, we've had these projects coming up the last couple of years, we've, we've been saving money for it. This would take us back exactly where we were a year ago for fund balance. I'll just throw that out for conversation purposes. That way, we'd give you an idea for Dr. Block, Craig, Lori, sit down, take a look at these things, and where can we maximize that? Just an idea.
How much are we looking at dropping the special ed budget? Or the, not the budget, but the call?
I believe it was two hun, two hundred thousand?
Two ten?
Two something, right around that two hundred mark.
So I'd go seven hundred.
Ooh. Well, and I'll tell you, Joel, you look at, it's funny you should say that, but flip the second page. There's a lot of information when you read this, and they do a very good job. But programs for special education, we had budgeted in our budget year, eight sixty-two, six seventy-nine. Actual amount that year, five twenty-four, five eleven. That was a savings of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That's the reason why we all sort of jumped from a one point four reserve to one point eight nine seven. So I could actually, Joel, be a little bit more aggressive with the seven fifty, if the board wanted to go there. I just threw out the five for conversation purposes. I think if we are doing construction, just get it done. You know, if we're gonna be tearing stuff up, I'd rather do it now than continuously drip it over the next few years.
I think that's an excellent point. One of the concerns that I've had, just looking at this preliminary, I don't want this project to be the reason we say no to other programs for multiple years in a row, trying to finish this project. And when I say finish this project, I mean everything associated with it. And so if we can prioritize and get done what we can get done as much as possible, I think it's, it's going to help other programs. Right now, I've, I've got some requests from other programs that, in all honesty, when Lori and I start looking at it, if we were to prioritize, we'd probably say, yeah, we're gonna say no to those things while we try to finish what goes, what's associated with this big project. But I don't want that to continue over a two, three-year span, where I'm saying no to my art project, or no to my whoever, because, you know.
And we also have other projects, I mean, just because we've finished this, doesn't mean we're done completely. We still have.
Well, that's, and I, I should clarify a little bit, I'm not talking about spending seven hundred on cameras and. We've. We, we still gotta do something down here.
Travis is going to put something together for us on heating and stuff over there.
That was another thing that I was gonna bring up. We do have a decision, and I don't know what we have for specific options. Right now, I can tell you that previously Travis put together some information for us that would be upgrading the wrestling room, making some new locker rooms, you'd have some selective dis, or, what do you call it? Demolition, and salvaging just a portion of the fifty's wing. We have to look at that, and the reason I say that is, our current boiler, which is part of the reason that we've, we've started looking at this, you know, the condition of the building, the size of the fifty's wing and the boiler, our current boiler, we have to continue to use if we don't find a solution for the wrestling room and locker rooms. We, we still have to do that, or the options that Travis has put together for some alternative heating units.
Which we've known all along. And the fact is, is we've left that kind of open-ended, to see if there was some community groups that were gonna come to us with some ideas, and we aren't hearing from them, so now we're gonna be making some decisions, right?
You know, you hear a lot of talk, I mean, I've heard plenty of people talk about a wrestling room. I've heard plenty of people talk about a, an auxiliary gym. I've heard individuals talk about a performing arts center, but there just hasn't.
Just been all talk, no action.
There's just not been any traction. It would be nice if there's people out in the community that want to get together, you know. We'd like to have good ideas, have some different ideas to run by, see what the groups want. But if they don't make a decision eventually, we will.
We will have to. Dr. Block's right, I mean, we're gonna have to start making some decisions.
And that would have to be included in the budget.
Yep.
Either maintaining the current boiler and doing what we can with that.
I don't think that's an option. We gotta.
I don't think it's an option either.
Gotta get rid of that.
I, yeah, I, the boiler is just like steps for me, I want it gone. I want it gone. And there is only so many, we've already reached the point where I think we're, we're getting to the last step. I don't know if, so more year, we'll get out of it.
By the July meeting, before we finalize the budget, Jack should pretty well be wrapped up here with his numbers. So we should know, as Dr. Block said, so this is complete, so we don't have stuff hanging out there for a couple of years.
Well, and we're gonna have, I mean, the next thirty days makes a significant difference in us being able to plan.
And we're running.
For expenses too.
The overages, we're not, we're not having overages.
They're very minimal, if any.
Yeah, six hundred and ninety-four dollars or something, I think is all it was.
But what if we did this, Jim? Just for planning purposes, at least to have the conversation started tonight. If the, if the group would be comfortable with using that five hundred thousand number, it takes us back to twenty-twenty-two's general fund. See what you can fit into there, and then give us an option, if we went five to seven fifty, what would be next, Jim? At the same time then, we still have, we know what we compare that to, for example, just with, let's say we have to just demo the CTE wing. You know, or we have to do something else. But could we have an idea of what we're looking at expense-wise, and what your priority would be out of this list then, Jim?
I can certainly prioritize the items, but bear with me on the amounts.
We get that.
You know, I'm gonna be moved from the hip on some of them.
We get that.
But that's a great starting place, because we just, we're like, you know, what do you, but this will be good. We'll come up with that, and we'll see where we're at on our five thousand and, five hundred thousand, and that'll be good.
So if there are any groups out there in the public, working on any sort of solutions to the wrestling room, or the auxiliary gyms, or the performing arts center, we're gonna finalize a budget July first. We need some answers.
Okay. Anything else, Lori, on the budget?
Not unless you guys have questions. Then come to my office, Larry.
That's not the first time Larry's heard that. See you in the office, Larry. Hey, speaking of the speaker system, did we ever get our perks from China?
For the army? No, not yet.
Almost.
Can we cancel the order?
Can we, I mean, can we actually get refunded on that and just? I mean, this is ridiculous.
It is, it's almost a year.
It's been a year. It's been a year, and we were on top of that to try to get it done. It, it'll be 14 months, because it was last graduation where we made it a, a priority. And so everybody that's out there and asks, we have had the system on back order. We did it right away. There's been a supply issue.
For, for what it's worth, Dr. Block, I listened on Bearcat TV to the awards program, and I could hear it really well. There was one speaker that was a little softer spoken, but, you know, I don't know what it sounded like in there, but however you're, you were set up there with Bearcat TV. I mean, I could hear it well.
You have to speak directly into the microphone, I mean, and you gotta project your voice with the current setup. You shouldn't have to do that. I mean, it really should pick you up better than it does.
Look into that, Jim. I mean, I, I'm good. If we've gotta hit the reset button, this is ridiculous. I mean, it's been 14 months.
I agree.
Okay. Anything else on the budget? If not, motion to move into executive session and negotiations.
So moved.
Thank you, Joel. Second? Thank you, Marty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next board meeting is...
June 12.
Bingo. See you guys June 12.
I'm good.